So it's seven o'clock, let's get this meeting rolling. Looks like we have everyone except John with us right now. So we'll assume he's not going to be here tonight. Has everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a motion approved?
So moved.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. This should be a pretty short meeting, I don't really think that we have much business to conduct, but I thought that we should have it anyway, just to get caught up with everything that has been going on. One thing I would like to note, maybe Barbara or Kim were gonna, you know, address this anyway, but I heard from Kim Pachivka today, I had asked her how we're doing on tax collections. And she'd given me an amount, which I don't remember, and it was, you know, the amount itself is almost meaningless. So I said, what's that compared to previous years? So this year, we're at forty-three and change percent of collection right now. In previous years, we've been four to five percent ahead of that. So forty-seven, forty-eight percent. So, you know, we're, that converts to about, you know, we're down ten percent, which considering everything that's going on, seems pretty good.
Pretty good on good.
Yeah.
So Barbara, what have you got to catch us up on?
Well, I did send you guys all, and Kim's iPhone, is that Kim Barron?
Yes, it's me, it's Kim Barron.
Yep. So I did send you all an email on August 12th, after the week from hell, which it really was.
Thank you for everything you did Barbara, that was great leadership, well done.
Well done.
You know, we have a good team, we do have a good team. And, but it was non-stop pushing, you know, I heard to not, just to be calling people that you know, and going up the line at Eversource, and not getting any response, and then they put in another layer of, you know, a person in between my contact and said, this is who you're gonna talk to, who knew absolutely nothing that was going on. But to not get answers at all, they didn't, it was really bad. And so I'm hearing that they actually, when this storm hit the Carolinas, Connecticut sent Eversource to help them. Now, why would you do that when this thing is coming up the coast? And they really did not play it well at all. So, you know, like I said, we finally got somebody from Michigan, and they were, they were awesome. And they ended up going to Brookfield, they went to New Milford, they were in Woodbury. But these, the companies that came from out of town were spread out, until Eversource finally did show up. And for us, you know, it was days, and people lost a lot of food. I mean, our transfer station was packed with stuff, and it was not a good thing. However, I can't say enough about Bernie Mann, our emergency management director. He was here with me twelve, thirteen hours a day. We had our fire chief, our ambulance chief, they were, you know, giving tasks to people. So it really worked out well, it really did. It was the best that it could be, trust me, because it was, it was not good. And then it, these poor people up on Apple Ridge, which is at the end of Grassy Hill, they had something blow out underground. And we didn't have anybody here, and I was on the phone just nagging Eversource to get a generator up there, because it was three people on Apple Ridge and three on Grassy Hill. And I said, they can't possibly go another night, you know, with no power or anything. So they did, they got it up there, and I said, but you can't leave it there, you gotta attach this thing. And it's just that, the whole week was like that, just staying after people. So I was gonna put something out two days ago, and then I was gonna put it out today, and I didn't get to it, but there are still people that don't have their internet. And I definitely have a live one from Spectrum, but it took me a while to get this, ahold of a guy that could do something and show up, you know, to people's houses. So I'm gonna put that out tomorrow, if, if anybody still doesn't have their phones, because when Charter Spectrum goes down, and you have a package with internet, TV, and phone, your phone doesn't work either, so.
But you know, we have a landmine here, and the landlines didn't work at either thirty-five Schoolhouse or one Davenport.
Right. It all goes down, it's just not a good thing. And so we are, there's not, there's not a whole lot I can do about that. But Frontier, you know, we, we had, everything that could go wrong seemed like it did, because we had problems with the cell tower and AT&amp;T. My messages weren't getting out to some people, so, you know, somebody said, oh, we usually hear from you. I said, I am, I'm communicating, but it just wasn't getting out there. So, anyway, we came through it, like we always do, and got into a couple of the newspapers, because I did send Bill Carrio to Hollyville and Newtown, and said, I want you to go and put some of those, you know, what do you call the things?
Handcuffs.
Handcuffs, handcuffs somebody at Eversource and bring them back here. And he looked at me and he said, are you serious? I'm dead serious. And he did, he went down there, he said, one of yous is coming with me, we're getting Barbara on the phone. So he did, he got one guy in a truck, they came back. And then he was here for an hour, actually, but then his, his, what do you call it, his time was up, his shift was over, I said, figures. But the next day, we had all the guys from Michigan, it was funny. But that night, I had a reporter call, so somebody told somebody, and he said, I hear you were going down to arrest Eversource. I said, what? But I, he said, well, we heard about the policeman down there. I said, yeah, he did, he went down there, he didn't think I was serious. He said, well, was there a confrontation, you know, did he have gunpoint? I said, no, 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 none of that. They just followed him back, so. Anyway, it got into, I don't know, a bunch of papers, the Middletown Press, everything, and people were calling me, and man, and then they knew that we had the guys from Michigan, and they were, send them over here. Everybody was mad, everybody was mad, so. That's behind us. I've been trying to get out of our trash contract with MIRA, and we've been HRA forever, and they changed their name, things changed over the years, and it's now M-I-R-A. And they have a three-hundred-and-thirty-million-dollar project to fix the trashed energy plant. And we are in this contract till 2027. And we had to fill out something, it was non-binding, that we would stick with them, and eventually, we would go from, Kim, what are we, ninety-one a ton this year, trash? Something like that.
Ninety-one, yeah, I believe so.
To a hundred-and-forty-five. And that was just gonna be, because we were gonna take on this debt. But they promised that they would work with the state, and so that hopefully it wouldn't be that amount. Well, the state told them to go pound sand. And so, thank God, it was non-binding, and I said, well then, you know what? Talk to HRA, and they have a trashed energy plant that they bring their stuff to in Bridgeport. But they won't let us out of contract right now, I have to wait till next March. And so what they, when they found out the state wasn't gonna give them the money, they are redoing how, how is our trash gonna be handled? And they're looking at building train platforms to take this trash out of state. And it was, and that's why I was like, well, I don't know if we wanna stay in this, because what state is gonna take all our garbage forever? We, I can't see Connecticut taking people's garbage, but it was gonna go to Ohio, and Pennsylvania, and one other state. So I said, you know what, we're gonna make some other plans, but I'm not gonna be able to do it. And so they're trying to re, and then the state came and told them, you know what? I don't know that we're gonna let you build these train platforms. I don't know what is gonna happen, I really don't. I don't know where they can bury it in the state. Trash to energy is the way to go. So that's just a sit and wait kinda thing. But we're locked into our price for tonnage that's being brought out of here for the next fiscal year. However, with the influx of people, our, our costs are going up, because of the time, the number to haul out of here.
How are we doing with all of the weekenders who moved up here full-time? Is our tonnage up at the transfer station?
Yep, Kim, you can speak to that too, but.
Yes, yes, very much so, especially the hauling.
Hauling, the number of times.
Because in March, when, when the governor shut everything down, the company that took all of our recyclables, our five-cent returnables, that we, that they would convert into cash for us, for the resident relief fund, they stopped coming. So, so all the recyclables then were being hauled out of here by HRA, or MIRA, excuse me, HRA's the old name. And, and so our, our, I think in the history of the town, since I've been doing this job, I've never seen costs so high for hauling.
You got Amazon effect?
Two or three.
Crazy. It's, and, you know, our town did not go to single-stream recycling, and a lot of it was for selfish reasons, because we have such a small transfer station, and it was organized, and then we would have to spend a lot of money to reconfigure it. And so we kept everything separate. And now they're finding that that was not really a good thing to do, to go to single recycling. The cardboard is disgusting, they can't, there's, and then there's no market for a lot of the recyclables. And our stuff has always been separated. Unfortunately, it gets dumped in, you know, when it gets to Hartford. But, because someone called me about that the other day, I said, we were one of the few towns that didn't do it. But now, we're feeling it because of the number of people in the community, and how they are shopping. And with this storm, the amount of food and will, that went up there, because people lost their freezers full, it's a mess. So we're gonna see increases in that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's basically doubled since March.
Wow.
You have, you have about, I don't know, eighteen, nineteen hauls out of the transfer station, and now, I think last month, it was thirty, thirty-some odd haul for, for everything. So, so it's, it's gone up a lot.
Any chance that's FEMA reimbursable, because it's related to COVID?
What I've been told, the answer is no. If we can absorb it, i- if we can absorb it into our budget, Barbara and I have discussed this. And if we can absorb it into our budget, we probably won't get reimbursed for it. But I will try to submit something to the Coronavirus Relief Fund. That's being administered by OPM at the state. OPM wants you to go to FEMA first, then they want you to go to Department of Public Health, then they want you to go to the DECD, and then if you can't get your cost reimbursed through any of those, then you come to them for the Coronavirus Relief Fund. And, but I, but I, as I've been told by people at OPM, you probably won't see any reimbursement for that type of thing. Right now, that, right now, it's protective measures.
And, I mean, when you said that, I just thought, you know, but the storm, the hauling that, the additional hauling of people's freezers full of food, you know? If the, the governor declared an emergency, so did we, but we haven't heard from federal government, but we're certainly gonna try, you know, try to go after every.
We're gonna do everything we can to get reimbursed for our costs, you know, we just have to. And so if we, if we get it, we don't, you know, some of these rulings, it's still a very fluid situation. And so there may be some change by FEMA and/or the powers that be at the state down the road. And so that may all change, but I still, regardless of whether I think we're gonna get any money right now, we have to, we have to keep submitting everything that we think is there. I don't have a lot of hope for it in the end.
Okay.
Well, it's, like I said in my, in my email, you know, they're backpedaling now. It was, we'll reimburse you for reopening costs, and, you know, buy the shields, and buy all this stuff for your employees, and now they're saying, ah, well, maybe we won't. And, okay, you know, just give it, tell us what it's gonna be, because Kim has gotta keep track of all this stuff, and it's time, and it's, well, why are we keeping track of it if it's not to our benefit? It's very frustrating.
But they'll tell you to keep submitting it, because it may change, it may change. So you, you have to keep, you have to do your due diligence, whether it bears fruit. But it's tough.
So, anyway, I am working on it, thank God. They extended the steep grants submissions till this Friday, and from last Friday. And I'm putting in, they said, what they really want this year is some things that are COVID-related. So I'm, I think I might even said this, trying to go for some of the things for, that are security-based. Our generator gave out here the other day during the storm, and, you know, we had to buy a part that was over two thousand dollars. And it's eighteen years old, so maybe I can throw that in, you know, to get a new one of those. And, but we were doing some things that I think we will get the money. However, normally, with the steep grant, you get five-hundred-thousand dollars, you can ask for, you may not get it. Now you can only ask for a hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand. And so, who knows, still gonna try to do that. Have not heard anything on the local bridge program, but that's supposed to be, they said the summer, but you know what, everything fell out, stuff happened, and probably not until September, but I, I, I'm keeping in touch with the, the guy at OPM and saying, I got two bridges I gotta get, Davenport and Otterford Hill. Those are, we, we gotta get some money for them. We did get some money for our town aid road. We got another hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, I think it was, Kim?
Yes, hundred and six, yeah.
Something like that. So, so that's good, so the state's money is coming in, but I can see the governor just for some other, he did, I didn't read the whole thing, but he just came out yesterday and said, you better all prepare for a ten percent cut, like nonprofits and everything, I don't know, I don't know if you read it, Kim, if it was municipalities also.
I did not, I did not read that document.
Came out, I just didn't get it.
Did not read it.
But other than that, got a great town, got great people, people who have donated, and people who are just watching out for each other. You know, it's, everybody comes together when we have to do that. Patrick came, you know, we were washing clothes for these guys, and Patrick got a dishwasher and dryer from Lowe's, which I, I wanted to ask you, and I'll tell you, that thing was, I didn't, couldn't hear that thing running. I almost used steel it one night, it was so quiet. But we're gonna give it to the firemen.
That's what I figured, I figured if they had had a good one, you wouldn't be at. So what I have to do is turn my power on at my house in Bethel, and.
Thank you, that was, because you know what? Before I, before I made your, the call to you, I was looking, you know, where they, they rent these trailers that, you know, have bathrooms that go to weddings, but they have, they have laundry places. And we, I was gonna do anything we had to do to try and keep these guys here, because everybody was trying to steal them, there was just nobody out there. And they were very appreciative, because they were, they were gonna be here a lot longer than they thought. And it was, it was just a good thing, that's all.
Barbara, how did you get ahold of that team?
No, I did not get ahold of that team. I know, I called Eversource in the morning, and I said, holy, they called me, I'm sorry. And they said, you know what, we finally got a Make Safe crew for you, which is, all I wanted for a couple of days is come and tell me, one guy in a pickup truck, that's all I want, that he could say, that wire's hot, this one's not. And I said, you wouldn't even give that to me? And I said, I don't know, I called everybody all over the place, and I, there's twenty-eight, thirty-eight guys sitting here in the parking lot with like thirty trucks. And I don't need your Make Safe crew, because the Public Works guys, who were awesome, and I'll tell you, Oak Ridge Services, which was Paulie Swanson.
Yeah.
They cleared all of our roads, and I said, I don't need you anymore, I've got all these guys. And you know what the response was? Did you get those guys, or did we? And I said, don't call me again, you don't even have, whoa, what is going on? We don't, it's, it is never source, so don't, don't bother me. But anyway.
So Barbara, I, I had a question. I'm sorry, you've still got more to?
Nope.
In reviewing the numbers that you sent out last week, or this week, recently, I noticed the paving budget numbers were higher than anticipated, and I'm curious why that was.
The paving numbers?
Yeah. For last year, you know?
Wait a minute, did this is a report that Kim sent out?
Yeah.
Yeah, they did, I can speak to that, Andy.
Drawing a blank.
They did a lot of
Patchwork, but.
Patchwork. It was, it was, it was a number of jobs on different roads that accumulated into quite a large number there. And, and what I have asked Barbara to do is that, we don't necessarily need to increase that budget, but we need to move the money around in it. And from here, when we have these types of things happen, where we have more paving, more patching, I think the year before, we had a lot of process, the dirt roads were in bad shape, and there was a ton of process, but it, it's kind of a crapshoot because of the weather and what happens with all of that, so.
Yeah.
They did, they did a lot of patch, patchwork, it's all over, I'm just trying to think of one road. It must be South Street must have had a bunch on it. And I mean, even at Davenport, they had a, they had a, you know, patched some area there. But they did, they did, I can't, I'm drawing a blank of exactly what it was. But it was, I do, I do know they did a lot of patching.
I can send you if you'd like it, but, because I can't remember all the roads off the top of my head.
No, that's okay, I was just really curious about that, because I'm thinking, we didn't pave any roads this year, and if we did, we should have had a, an idea what was going on.
We absolutely chip seal, and sometimes before that, we patch them. But like Kim is saying, you know, we'll keep some numbers the same within Public Works, and, and we know, okay, we're gonna overspend this line, and we're gonna underspend this line, so that it doesn't go, the bottom line doesn't go over. And maybe we should just switch them around.
Yeah, no, she's trying to understand, I wasn't really being critical, because as you said, the bottom line was fine, I just wanted to understand why.
Yep.
Okay, that's, that's everything I have for questions, did anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I wanna know why Patrick's tan.
Very tan.
Just kidding.
Oh, that's what it was.
I know, he was on vacation, and he's got a birthday coming up Thursday.
Oh boy.
My fellow Leo.
Birthday.
Happy birthday.
All right. Did you folks get copied on the emails from the library about the capital improvements at the Hodge?
Yeah.
Yes.
About the Miller Building to the Arthur Miller Studio?
Yes.
I followed up on the Hodge, again, I don't remember if I forwarded this to you or not, but they were overspending their budget, and I asked them, well, how are you gonna do that? And they said that they had gotten a significant donation that they could use for that, so.
No, I thought that was a bit of good news.
Yeah, I thought it was too. Just wanted to be sure that everybody understood what had happened there.
Yeah.
Teresa had asked me if I would write a steep grant for all that, but when I found out I could only go for a hundred-and-twenty-eight, I said, I can't, I can't, I'm not doing the library, I'm doing the town hall. So, but the Arthur Miller, the Arthur Miller, something just came through from Cynthia today on that, because I said, what is going on with that?
Right, and all I know is that they're not being successful in finding funding for that.
Yep. So this, we're storing this beauty of a building back here, and it was supposed to be for six months, it's gotta be going on two and a half years now. And I said, what, where is this nonprofit that they were going to be?
Right, who owns this building right now?
I, we don't, we don't own it, but we're storing it, and I did get, you know, what's her name, Miller, to, to sign something that Rebecca, to say, we are not responsible for anything, if a tree falls on it, the mice take over, nothing. You can keep it here, but the town is not responsible, and we're not gonna, you know, insure it or anything, and she, I have that. But it's getting ridiculous back here, you know? It's ugly, I don't care if Arthur Miller built it, but it, this guy, it's nothing to save, it's awful, it's good, bad screen doors.
Good writer, terrible carpenter.
I guess he was a better writer.
So that was everything I had, does anyone else have anything?
No.
No, but you know what, I would like, so, I need to get back to them and say, get this out of here. You know, it's taken up room in Public Works, and like I said, it's gotta be a mouse condo by now, but I don't know where they're gonna put it, I know, I don't know, I don't know what to do with it, but, anyway.
Yeah. Well, we'll see what the library board comes up with, maybe, you know, something will shake loose there, but I'm not hopeful, Cynthia wasn't hopeful.
No. Maybe it should go back to the property.
The Miller's done okay.
The new owner doesn't want it.
The, the new owner doesn't want it?
No. That's why we have it.
Hidden in the woods behind my house.
What did you say?
Hidden in the woods behind my house.
Tomorrow.
It's pretty close to the Miller property.
It's very close.
No, I, I just don't know, I just don't see an end here, you know, if they were working on something, but I don't, I don't know that anybody's working on anything to get it going, which is unfortunate, because they had a nice idea, and we're happy to help, but this is just going on a lot longer.
Right.
So I do wanna thank John Hopkins, because he's making money for this town, he's a special constable down at the Falls. And he is.
Making that shortfall in property taxes, you know?
It is amazing how many people are paying, but I can't, when they're gone, I don't know where these people are coming from, they're all over the state. They're all over the state, it's amazing. I rip these open to see where the checks are. John, you're doing a hell of a job.
Well, you know.
And I, I meant to ask Judy, because she's keeping, how much you've brought in, so I'll, I'll get that, so that y'all know. Ninety dollars a hit.
Are you on commission or what?
No, I'm not on commission. I receive no compensation other than lip from people who don't like getting tickets.
Well, yeah.
Good job.
Absolutely. Was there any other business?
I had one question, and you might have asked this previously, but collections, how do we look compared to last year?
Yep, I talked to Kim Pachivka earlier this week, I actually got an email from her yesterday or today. And right now, we're at about forty-three percent. In previous years, we were in the forty-seven to forty-eight percent collected range, so substantially there.
I think it's about four-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand dollars less than July of last year.
Four-hundred-and-seventy-five less from last year, when I wrote that email.
I think she added about six thousand dollars to that, so it's about four-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand less than collections in July last year.
Kim, do you have any feel for, let me, let me make a point, if, if, we have people that are, their accountants take care of this for them.
Yep.
And if you're an accountant, you don't pay anything until it's due. And they're very aware of that. So I'm trying to get a feel for money that will come in on October first and money that might not come in October first because people are in, in expense.
Right. I, I have been asking Kim Pocryfka that very question. I said, I know people aren't delinquent, but can we get a report for people who haven't paid their taxes, even though they're not delinquent right now? And the answer to that was, quality data, the software company is working on that type of report. They usually don't report things unless people are delinquent, which they're technically not right now. So in a couple of, hopefully by the end of this week, I'll have some, we'll have some type of report so that we know who has not paid their taxes on the two thousand nineteen grant list.
I'd be less concerned if they're large balances, actually.
Makes sense.
Right. Well, you know, some of the people that were delinquent previous, in previous year, that worked on the unemployment list, got that extra six hundred and some of them paid their taxes off.
Yes, they did.
Cool, it's good.
Yeah, I don't have a good feel for it right now, John, but because what I feel as we go to the end of the fiscal year in two thousand twenty-one, that our, our delinquent balance will be a lot higher than it was at the end of June. But it's, it's, I think it's gonna be traditionally the people who are, are chronically delinquent on paying their taxes. I think you're just gonna end up seeing a bigger number from those people. That's what I think. But, but hopefully I'll have some kind of report from Kim that shows who's paid and who hasn't, even though they're not delinquent yet.
Another number I'd be curious to learn is how we're doing on property transfer fees. Because I, property has been selling.
Yes, we had a, we had a big, we had a, the town clerk's office has been doing a booming business, I can say.
So it's the building department, the building department. Got new houses. It's unbelievable.
Taxes and all of that. It's been, there, there are a couple of numbers that are, that to me are historic that I've never seen before. So at least in my twenty-odd years doing this job, so.
That would be something that would be nice to know for the next meeting.
Yeah. Yeah. I'd be very curious.
Yep. I can, I can do that. I haven't, you know, I'm trying to close out once and for all the fiscal year. I have a couple more entries I've gotta make. And then I can kind of analyze the numbers and, and look at it historically and, and get you something along that line. I can definitely do that.
That's perfect, Kim. You know, do what you have to do first, of course.
Yep, yep.
Okay, anything else?
I just am letting you know that I, I'm gonna be a grandmother again, but it's, it's gonna happen in Florida. And I, I'm going. So I guess I have to sign something when I get back to the airport that I'll hibernate for two weeks. But, which I will do. And I will have to work remote, I guess. But not gonna be out of it. Certainly not gonna work from there also. But I, I am gonna go down there for that. She's due second, but I think I'm gonna go, I think it's gonna be earlier.
What's the date?
She's due September second. But I just heard from my husband that they're thinking about not waiting that long and getting her out of there, which would be next week sometime. We'll see.
Okay.
Not worried about it.
Anything else?
I move the meeting be adjourned.
Is there a second?
Back in.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't suppose anyone's in opposition. So, thank you all. Have a good evening and enjoy the rest of your summer.
You too.
You too.
Drink. Leo drink.
Yep.
Take care.
Good night.
Bye, Julie.
Goodbye.
Nice to see you.
Good seeing you too.